Call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please take a roll.
Well, Madam President, the full board is here.
Well, today we are fortunate to have with us Jennifer Schwab, who is our new Community Relations Liaison, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Thank you. First item that we have is our consent. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to action. Our first action item is Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, I presented the budget to the budgets, I should say, to the board and the public. This evening is an opportunity for more -- we had some discussion at the last meeting. This evening is an opportunity for more discussion on the budget on the part of the board. And then after this meeting, I will ask for authorization to advertise for a hearing on these budgets. Then at the October 13th meeting, we'll have a public hearing, give opportunity for the public to make any comments they want. And of course, the board could also have yet another opportunity to ask any questions or to make any discussion or comments that you might have at that meeting. And then after that, we will go to the last meeting in October and recommend the board adopt the budgets. So that's an overview of the process. So with that, I'll attempt to respond to any questions that you might have.
Okay. Well, to begin, we'll take some action. May I get a motion to advertise for permission or permission to advertise for the public hearings for the 2015 budgets?
I move. I move that we give the administration authorization to advertise for a public hearing on the 2015-217 Capital Projects Fund and the 2015-16 Bus Replacement Plan.
And the 2015 budgets?
And the 2015-16 budgets.
Sounds great. Second? Wonderful. Discussion? I do have one point of discussion.
Okay.
I don't know, based on what we have written here for action, if the board was fully prepared to ask a number of questions to, I don't know that we've all digested the full proposed budget. Would you be in favor of having a discussion on September 22nd solely for budget?
We could, or you could also plan to ask any or have any discussion that you want. I think it's October the 13th, which would be the night of the public hearing. Because while that's a public hearing, giving the board now opportunity to hear from the public, it's not unusual that the board would also take that time to have any discussion or comments that you would want to make before we actually move forward then with everything.
Okay. Other comments, questions from the board? Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of granting permission to the administration to advertise for the public hearing on the 2015 budgets, the three-year Capital Projects Fund Plan and the 12-year Bus Replacement Plan? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we have our refinancing of the 2005 refunding funds.
Yes, I'm excited to bring this report to you. You remember back in April, brought a recommendation to you to refinance another series of bonds, which we did. And we thought we would reduce and save the taxpayers about a million dollars and a little over. In the end, we saved about $1.7 million on those bond issues. We now have another issue that is available to refinance, thus the reason for this report. This could not have been included in the April because of the, they could not be, they've been refunded once and they could not be refunded again until October the 10th. So we couldn't include these back in April. But with this particular issue, it's Series 2005. These bonds are currently at an interest rate of 4.78%. We have an opportunity to refinance them. And if we were to refinance based on today, our estimate is that the interest rate would be .44. Somebody said, "Is that a mistake?" And the answer is no. It's .44. So money's pretty cheap by historical standards these days. And one reason it's so low or projected to be that low is there's only three and a half years left before these bonds will be paid off. But in that three and a half years, if we refinance, our estimate is that we would save about $518,000. So that's literally about, you know, you can kind of do the math on per day or per week, however you want to look at it. But it's a significant amount, given no more time than we're talking about. And I should point out that if we refi -- when we refinance bonds like this, we are saving, you are saving the taxpayers that much money. There was time, and I emphasize that because in years past, sometimes school districts would refinance bonds and then they would, whatever that savings was, they would spend it. Now, they spent it on things that were needed and I don't suggest that they didn't have good use for the funds. But there was that choice. And so oftentimes, the school board, rather than lower the tax rate or lower the cost to the taxpayer, they would refinance and then use the money for other projects or things like that. And the law has since changed where that's not an option in the first place. So the only motivation to do this is simply to save money for the taxpayers. And so there's really no downside to it that I can come up with because this is net of all expenses, by the way. So as I said, we would hope to save about a half a million dollars and hopefully even a little more than that. But I don't know how much lower they can go than the .44. But we'll try. So with that, and that's why this is on this meeting, as a workshop, you know, typically, we would not bring action items to a meeting like this. But I thought it was important to get this moving as quickly as we could.
Well, Roger, thank you very much for that explanation. And I appreciate you bringing it to us in such a timely manner. And it doesn't necessarily reflect our discussion and then action. We are taking action all in one meeting, but it is very time sensitive. So with that, may I get a motion on the table?
So move.
Second?
I'll second. The refinancing of the First Mortgage Refunding Bond Series 2005.
Thank you. Discussion? Guest, Mrs. Mills?
Yes, so you're saying that even though we looked at this last week, the bond rate is still .44?
Well, that's estimated until we actually take this to the marketplace and so forth. But our financial advisor is, who's pretty in tune to what, you know, it would be if we were doing it, you know, on a given day, this is the estimate that they've made.
Okay. And are there any other bonds out there that we have floating that we could possibly look at at this time and?
No.
And get that rate?
No, as a short answer. This, these are very circumstantial to the particular bond. So the ones we did in April, of course, were available. And so we proceeded then. This one, we could not do it in April. And so that's why it's here now. But we keep an eye on this type of thing, as you can see. And so if there is an opportunity, or we feel there is, where we can, you know, reduce the tax rate. And we're always taking in, you know, there's certain expenses associated with this, too. So it's always, you know, if there's a, in other words, you might be able to save a little bit, but if it costs you more money to go through the process than you would save, then of course, we wouldn't recommend that. So we're always looking at what the net effect would be.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. First of all, Roger, thanks for being on top of all this stuff.
You're welcome.
You bring us these great things. I wish you could do it every week. I do want to ask, with circuit breakers and kind of how we're all in this dance with other taxation units, does this benefit other local governments somehow?
It actually does. Now, it's in a, you know, while it's a half a million dollars in the context of all the levies in the community that are, may approach $100 million a year. But the answer, the short answer would be, is the way the circuit breaker works is if the total tax rate in the community from all the taxing units is beyond that maximum level, then the rates are reduced and cut. And they're cut in proportion to whatever percentage your fund is of that total. So for example, if our general fund were 50% of that tax rate and it was necessary by the circuit breaker statute to cut back 10%, then our fund would get cut 10%. So if we do something that lowers the tax rate, then that benefits all of us. And likewise, if somebody raises the tax rate, that can be detrimental to all of us. So, in fact, that's one of the things the circuit breaker has done is put taxing units in a position to where, if, for example, the city or if the school district were to go out and sell bonds and, or do something that would raise the tax rate, that was not outside the circuit breaker. We very well could have, you know, the city government or the library or whoever, you know, the other taxing units go, "Well, you caused the circuit breaker to kick in and because you raised the rate beyond the limit and now we all have to pay," you might say. So it's kind of one for all and all for one in that scenario. So the answer to your question is, in a small way, this would help everybody in our taxing unit to the extent that it will have a slight reduction in the tax rate.
So to whom should the city council address their vote of thanks?
To me. Actually, to you. I don't get to vote. So they can thank all of us.
Other questions or discussion items? Okay, let's take a vote then. All in favor of refinancing the First Mortgage Refunding Bond Series 2005? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our workshop topic brought to us by Dr. Dudley, the Student Growth Model Update NWEA.
Great, thank you. And as you know, our, last year, one of our goals for the district was to explore student growth models. And so we did explore those student growth models. And we wanted to find one that was a true student growth model. And also, we wanted to find one that would replace and we would, you know, weed the garden and take other assessments off of the table before we added something new. We didn't want to add an additional assessment piece on top of the assessments that we were currently doing. So the model that we did find and we landed on was NWEA. And so the same thing, I am going to give you an overview of NWEA. And as you probably reviewed your board notes, you notice there's a lot of slides. But don't worry, I'm not going to use all of them. But I wanted to make sure you had lots of examples of types of questions, of types of reports. We're not going to talk in depth about all of those. But those were there for your information so that you could have more examples. So don't worry, we won't be here all night, I promise. But as I said, we have selected NWEA. And one of the pieces that we will be looking at is using this in our kindergarten through fifth grade this year. And the pieces that it would take off the table are weeding the garden, the previous assessments, you can see on the left-hand side. Previously, we've used REEDS Assessment, which gave us a reading level. And we did that two or three times per year. We also use DIBBLES Next Benchmarking three times per year. That will be taken off the table. DRA that we used in kindergarten, two times per year, that'll be taken off. Our everyday math benchmark assessments will be replaced with NWEA. And then also, the GATES McGinnity Reading Test that we used to identify students for challenge testing, for honors testing, that will also come off the table because we'll use NWEA for that achievement assessment as well. So as you can see, we did quite extensively weed the garden. And our assessment profile, and we're going to go more in depth about all of these pieces, but I wanted to put this out front here. Previously, our assessment profile was about four or five pages in the elementary. This is now our current assessment profile. As you can see, it's one page. It fits actually on a slide. We will be doing assessments in kindergarten through second grade three times a year, in the fall, in the winter, and then also in the spring. For third through fifth grade, we'll actually be using the NWE assessment just two times. We'll do it in the fall and then in the winter. And in the spring, as you know, we have I-Step for third through fifth grade. And we also have I-Read for third grade. And those will be the spring assessment. And we'll talk about how NWEA and I-Step play together and how they work together in that area, too. So NWEA assessment implementation, we'll talk more about how, what that will look like this year in our elementary schools. So a little bit about NWEA. It is an association that's founded by educators. It's a not-for-profit association. And it has, it's on assessment, professional development, and research. And it's been around for over 40 years now. So they do have quite a body of research that they, their assessment data is based upon and their assessments as well. And so as they develop new assessments, as the need comes around, they do have quite a lot of data to pull from. And just to give you some information about the numbers, there are over 7,000 educational partners that work with NWEA. And that's in all 50 states, also in over 130 countries. And one of the things we'll talk about is the norming. We can look at norms, they're called virtual norms, where we can go in and look at us compared to other like districts in the state, in the country, and also in the world. So that'll give us another opportunity to look at that norming data. So we have, they have over 8 million students tested annually using MAP. And MAP is the actual assessment. We, sometimes we mix those terms together. NWEA is the association. But MAP is the measure of academic proficiency. That is the actual assessment that we'll use. And we have 42 assessments administered in 2012-13, or 42 million. Four billion test item responses, so they have quite a bit. So as you can see, it is a, lots of educators are using this. Lots of districts are using this everywhere. So as we think about the assessment and the pieces that we were looking at, obviously, we have lots of assessment needs. And they're very complex. And we want to make sure that we're measuring, we're not taking over the assessment to impede that instructional time. We want to make sure we have time for the instruction and we find an assessment system that works within our current structure as well. And of course, we need to have very reliable data that we can trust to help to inform our instruction. So we use assessment to inform that instruction, to measure the student growth, both within a year and from year to year as well. And NWEA will do both of those things. We also want to be able to project proficiency on our state assessments to determine, are there some pieces that we need to shore up before the students get to the very high-stakes test of I-Step? So we want to make sure that those pieces are put in. We want to be able to use this assessment data to differentiate our instruction and make sure we have that just right instruction for each of our students. Also, looking at universal screener to make sure that if we have any students that are in need of additional instruction in the form of intervention, we can use this to make sure that we're catching any students before they fall through the cracks. Also, identification and placement, as we talked about. This will be one of the tools that we use that will take the place of our achievement data that we used for our high ability challenges, our high ability places. And so that will help in this area. Also, we want to make sure that our students, when they graduate, are college and career ready. And this assessment is aligned to our new Indiana standards as well as ACT, SAT, all of those other pieces, all of those other assessments that our students will take down the road, that we can make sure that our students are ready for those assessments. This assessment will also be used set in goal setting. And then we could also use it at a district level looking at that program evaluation information. So we want to make sure that we know what our students are ready to learn and to maximize the growth for every one of our students. So as we said, the pieces that we'll use, we'll use the Measures of Academic Progress, or the MAP. And they have for third through 12th grade, they call it the MAP. And then they have the MAP for primary grades for kindergarten through second grade. Both of these assessments are computer adaptive assessments. And we'll talk about what that looks like and what that means. And as I said, there's more than 30 years of academic research behind the assessments. Because they're computer adaptive, the students, the assessments are actually more efficient than an assessment where it has a fixed number of questions that the students take. And also, the students and the teachers will receive immediate results as soon as the students are done with the assessment. So it's very timely information. So talking about how MAP works, we're going to talk about the scale, the test, the data, the reports, and then also our implementation. So the first part is the scale. And what they have, the scale is just like a measuring stick that we would use for any measure, just measuring even the height of a student, as you can see. The scale they use is the RIT scale. And this is based on, it's the RASH unit scale. And it's a mathematician, was named after RASH. But what it is, is it's an equal interval scale and it's grade level independent. And it's very stable over the year as well as over multiple years. And it looks at, it measures the student achievement and it also measures the test item difficulty. And so it's, as I said, it's designed to measure longitudinal growth over time. And then it also, you have that RIT scale, even if, whether you're taking MAP or the MAP for primary grades, that RIT scale is still consistent as you look over years. So if a student in first grade has a RIT scale, you can look at their growth over time all the way through fifth grade as they take that assessment. And as I said, the RIT scale also, each of the questions also has a RIT scale number to measure the difficulty of each of the individual questions. So as you look at this, you know, who had a better year? What student would you say has the blonde or the redhead? The redhead, why?
Scale scores to something.
235 or so?
I don't know, because all I can see is .2.
Oh, you're seeing just the side of it, yeah. It's 220. Okay, so now, does this change your mind at all? And why would you say the little boy? Right, right. And so that's when, as we're looking at student growth over time, we want to make sure who is making those gains. And we want to make sure all of our students are making those higher gains, not just our high students are staying high. So as we look at the test, as I said, the test is a computer adaptive test. And what that means is the students actually, the items adjust based on how the students answer the test. So if I'm a student and I'm taking the test for the very first time and I'm a third-grade student, the very first question I have will be at a third-grade level. However, depending on how I answer that question, it will either calibrate up or it'll calibrate down. And then every time thereafter that I take the MAP assessment, I'll start with my ending RIT scale. So I'll never go back to that third grade. Let's say I scored 195 RIT scale. When I take it again in the winter, that's where my tests will start. And it will continue to do that and adjust up or down based on the students. So as I said, it is grade level independent. And because it's computer adaptive, in order to get a more accurate measure of where the student is, it requires fewer test items than every student taking, you know, a 52-item assessment. It will adjust up and down until it gets that just right, that scale score, that RIT scale. And it'll give you that very precise data. So as you can see, this might be a typical fifth-grade math class. And as you, the blue band there has that fifth-grade band of what that RIT scale might look like for fifth grade. But as you can see, not all of those students are in that blue band. We have some above, some below, and some right in the band. But when you layer on top of the sixth, the fourth, and the third grade, you can see our students in that fifth-grade class have a variety of different RIT scales in math. And so we would take this information and then we would align our instruction based on the needs of the individual students in that class. And so as I said, the adaptive test, it will start with that item difficulty right there on grade level. And then it adjusts up or down based on how the students answer the questions. And so this student, and as it adjusts up or down, the standard error of measurement also decreases. So you have, when you're looking at a standard error of measurement, you're looking at the probability if the student took the same assessment in a very short period of time without more instruction in that area, that student is very likely to score in that same range. And that, so you want a very small standard error of measurement. And as you adjust the assessment, that standard error of measurement actually decreases, which is what you want. And so that would be a student that might be lower. And here's a RIT scale of a student that's very advanced. And so you'll be able to see both of those students using the MAP assessment. And so one of the pieces that the MAP assessment does give us is that accurate data for all students. As you can see, in the middle, that would be your typical bell-shaped curve, where you have students, you know, in the middle, that 50th percentile, and you have students on the low range, students on the high range, as you move out into those achievement scores. But with a computer adaptive assessment, it helps you to get more information on students, not only your students in the middle range, but your students that are low performers as well as your students that are high performers. This is compared to I-Step, where I-Step is only comparing the student based on the standard. It's a criterion reference. This is actually comparing the student based on their own achievement and whether, and depending on how they're doing, it will calibrate up or down. So it does give you more precise information. So as we're looking at the different available assessments, the assessments that we'll use, as I said, will be our MAP assessment in grades. We'll use this in grades three through five. It will be our math, our reading, and our language usage assessments. And each of those assessments are approximately 50 minutes per session. And so those would be, you know, in the fall, as they take those, those would be 50 minutes per session that they would take. So that would be 150 minutes over. And when we do our assessment periods, it would be a three-week assessment window. And so over a three-week period, the students would be engaged in three 50-minute assessments, approximately. Some take a little bit longer, some take a little bit less time because it depends on how the student, how it's calibrating and the student is doing the assessment. The MAP for primary grades, they have a couple different types of assessments. We will be using the reading and math survey goals. And those are approximately 30 minutes for each session. So those would be two sessions of 30 minutes each, one for reading and one for math over a three-week window as well. And then in the primary grades, they also offer a screening assessment for early literacy and early numeracy and a skills checklist test, which the checklist tests are very specific skills that the teacher can have the student take at any time to just monitor their progress on very specific skills. Those are on the computer. However, the skills checklists are not computer adaptive. The screening ones are computer adaptive in many of the districts that use them. And one of the things we're looking at is the possibility of using that with our kindergarten, our new kindergarten students that enroll. Currently, we do screening with those students in the spring prior to their kindergarten year. So as they enroll in school, using our screening as a way to look at their early numeracy and their early literacy pieces. And that'll give us some really good data as our students come in. So as I said, the MAP for primary grades does have several different types of assessments. And we'll use those in a variety of ways based on the needs of our students. and we'll use those in a variety of ways based on the needs of our students. So some sample items, you might see some items like this, that would be a typical question where you're measuring the angle and you select the right answer. Some of the other ones where they have computer or technology enhanced items. And one of the benefits to having our students work with some of the questions that are more, are technology enhanced, like for example, this one, the students have to drag and drop the different labels for the circuit, to build the circuit, and they're dragging and dropping that. One of the pieces with the technology enhanced, our students will be expected to use technology enhanced on I-Step and on, and of course, assessment. So this will also prepare them and help them get used to that type of assessment that they'll be using. Some other, here's another example of a lower level of a technology enhanced, they need to look at the greater than or less than. And as you can see, that little speaker at the front, the assessments in the primary MAP, the directions are read to the students, so the students will, would hear, use headphones, and they have the directions read to them, so there's not a question of whether or not they can read what they're asking them to do. Here's another example of a technology enhanced where they have to create the number from the number palette below. And then they obviously have some letter sounds where they're reading to the students, listening to those different sounds where they have to identify. So there's lots of opportunities in our students, before they take this assessment, our students will have lots of opportunities to practice this in almost an experienced map, so they can work with using the mouse. Especially our youngest students, many of our younger students are very proficient in using technology, but in a lot of the technology they use, they're very used to using a touchscreen. But using the mouse to drag and drop, using the mouse to click on different items, that is, that is a little bit different than just touching the screen. And our kindergartners that come in, in the beginning of the year, that's what they start doing on anything. They start trying to touch the screen, but they learn very quickly how to use the mouse. Another piece of the technology enhanced piece, they also have check all the correct answers. And so there may be more than one answer, it's multiple answers. Like for example, one of them may be looking, you know, mark all of the cylinders in this question, and so then they have to click all of the cylinders that they see, and there's a variety of different objects there that they would be clicking on. So there's, that's another piece of the technology enhanced. As soon as the students are finished with the test, they get this form that tells them, here's your score. And so immediate results, and then the teacher has immediate feedback as well. And there's a variety of data pieces as we look at, and as I said, they will get a RIT score, which is an overall performance by subject area, and that will measure that growth over time. The students will also have the opportunity, the students and the teachers, to look at that RIT range, and they set goals based on that next assessment. They give you what is the goal for the student, and then the student would actually use that data, where the teacher would go through a process and help the student to set those goals on what they want to achieve and the things that they want to work on based on the information. And the MAP assessment also gives us a Lexile score. And so this will better, help us better fine tune the materials that we're using in literacy to make sure that we are matching our students with that just right reading materials. And as I said, the, this assessment will also give us normative data, and the norming data that they use is based on a vast variety of data, so that we look at all over the United States. And as I said, the, they have the status norms, which are those percentile ranks based on all of the students that take it across the United States. But then we also will have the possibility to norm our, look at our own norms, create our own caramel clay school norms, and also compare that to other students in like districts across the country and across the world as well, which will be a nice benefit, because sometimes finding that norming data, just looking at our counterparts in Indiana, doesn't give us all the information that we need. And then it also looks at those growth norms, or projects that growth for every student based on their grade level, their starting score, and the instructional time to, so the students, it helps the students to set those goals. And as I said, it also projects proficiency for I-Step. So it will project the performance of how the student will do in the areas of I-Step for English Language Arts, math, as well as math. And so the teacher will have that information to be able to shore up any of those skills the students might need before they take I-Step. It's, rather than waiting until after they take I-Step to shore those up. So this will give us another tool that will really help us fine tune that instruction. The data that our teachers and our students will get will be very actionable. It will give the students, let me show you this chart, where it will show you different skills that the teacher could use to knowing exactly where is that zone of proximal development? Where should we start with the student? Once is the student ready to learn? What are the skills that need to be reinforced? The skills that need to be developed? And then skills that need to be introduced? And it really fine tunes that instruction and helps give the teacher a blueprint for each individual student. So as I said, there's lots of different reports, and there are individual reports for the students and the parents to use, where it looks at setting growth, and you get down to the process where you want the students to own this data, to really look at this data for themselves and then to set their own goals based on what that data's telling you. It also gives very good data for the teacher, so that the teacher can inform his or her own instruction to identify and differentiate instruction, identify instructional resources, and then also collaborate with other professionals as well. And it also gives school leaders and district leaders looking at the data for flexible grouping, for program evaluations, resource allocations, and also proficiency projections. So we can use data at a variety of different levels. And there are a variety of different reports that the students will receive. This is an example of a goal-setting report that the students would receive and the parents as well. There's teacher-in-class reports where the individual teacher would see their whole class, looking at the different RIT scores, as well as percentile scores and Lexile scores for the students. It also gives you breakdowns with proficiency. This is a report that's a projected proficiency on I-Step that would give the teacher some information. And this would be fine tuned and broken down even more as far as specific skills, those different reports. This is also, this is another example of a class report where you're looking at your students and their range and where they are in specific areas as well. And here's another achievement report and looking at growth over time. This would be another class report with all of your students. And then, of course, there's also district and school reports that you can look at. How is a whole grade level across the whole district doing? What's that growth look like over time for those students to help make decisions on programming decisions, looking at what areas need to be shored up when we look at overall with those programs? And some more examples of just, here's a student growth summary report. And so as you can see, there's lots of different reports that are available to all of the different users at all of the different levels, from the individual student and parents all the way up through the district level. So as we look at the implementation, in our K through five implementation, we're looking at a three-year implementation. So in year one, we were starting obviously with the MAP administration and just knowing, okay, how do we, you know, what is MAP? How do we use it? What do we get with it? And what are the nuts and bolts of having the students take that assessment? That is something we actually started today with an NWEA coach that we worked with. Today, we started with principals and assistant principals, and we also have some district trainers that worked all day today. Tomorrow and the next day, then we'll be bringing teachers on, and so working with our NWEA coach. And then we're building that capacity to each of our schools, so that they can take that back then and train the rest of their staff at their schools, their teachers, their instructional assistants, because people have a variety of roles based on being, looking at, needing to know the data. But then also, we have people that will act as proctors, and so they'll have a different role and require different training. And so we're building that capacity at all eleven of our schools. So today, as I said, we started with our principals and assistant principals, and then over the next two days, we will bring seven teachers from a variety of grade levels and special education teachers, Title I teachers, a variety of teachers that will then be, will be able to build the capacity and then go back and support that implementation in their schools. So we'll, starting with our MAP administration applying reports, and then next year, we'll move into really fine tuning and looking at our very specific data. And the reason we're starting with year two with informing the instruction is we want to make sure we have a year's worth of data. So we would be looking at fall-to-fall data, so we could look at that growth over time, and really dig down into our curriculum and matching that up with the data that we're receiving from the MAP assessments. And then year three, continuing to focus on that growth over time. And so we'll have a very extensive implementation that is very specific based on the needs of the teachers, based on the needs of the students, to implement this, to use the data to the best of its ability. And so as I said, year one, we're working with just the implementation. And then in October, we'll finish up our first assessment and we'll really dig into applying those reports and learning more about those reports, what are those reports telling us? How do we use those, how do we help our students understand those? How do we help our parents understand those? And we'll be very explicit in that training, so that our teachers can take that back and work with our students, our parents, and communicate that. And then, as I said, then we'll move into that, informing that instruction, and then looking at the, focusing on the growth. So this is a very specific plan for just this year. Our first assessment window is starting, it's actually a pretty quick turnaround where we're looking at our September twenty-second through October tenth. So we want to do our first fall assessment window prior to fall break. And then our NWEA coach will come back the three days that we have that fall break that next week, the three days previous, will come back to do training with our administrators, with our teachers as well, so that we're all ready to move on with that data and implement that in our schools as soon as we return back from fall break. And then we will move into, we'll do our second assessment window, January twenty-sixth through February thirteenth. And in between that, we'll also have our coach come back and provide support at our individual schools as needed. So that would be more specific to the needs of each of the schools. And then we'll do our third assessment window for our kindergarten through second grade right after we complete I-Step for our third through fifth grade students. So in our third assessment window for our third through fifth grade students will be the I-Step as well. So we'll look at how that data lines up in using those reports as well with the data. So we're having a very intentional implementation plan to make sure that we understand this data, we understand how to use it, and we understand how all stakeholders would use it. We want to be very intentional in being able to communicate that, being able to train not only our teachers and our other staff at our schools, but then also our students on how to use the data for them to set their own individual goals, and then also parents as well. So some of the pieces, just some side notes, we want to make sure that we're using the MAP assessment within the structure of the day. We don't want to move into, like when we do I-Step, our high stakes test, we develop a testing schedule and pretty much everything shuts down and we do I-Step testing. We want to make this part of the structure of the day. So is that during computer lab time? Is that during needed special time? Making it part of the day rather than the whole school has to shut down as we're doing that assessment. And so our schools are looking at that based on their resources, based on the number of students. And so it will look a little bit different in each of our schools, because we have, you know, different numbers of students, but we'll all assess in a three-week window. And so all the students will have those assessments in that three-week window. We'll also use our, the MAP for primary grades, we have our kindergarten explorations, which is our advanced math for our kindergarten students. And typically, we have our kindergarten students start the school year, and we do not assess them until they're in school for about six to eight weeks. We want to make sure that they're comfortable with the school setting before we start saying, yes, the student needs something more in math. So this is right on track, but we'll, in the past, we use our everyday math. We will use our NWA MAP assessment to look at students that need additional support in, in the areas of advanced math for those kindergarten explorations. We'll also use it, as I said, to, as the achievement measure for our high ability programs, so that'll be looking at not only our challenge programs at the elementary levels, but then also at our honors programs at the middle school levels. We'll use this as the achievement measure. And so that will replace the Gates-McGuinety or the everyday math assessments that we've used in the past. And then, obviously, when our students are taking the assessments, if they have accommodations, if they have IEP accommodations, 504 accommodations, or ILP accommodations, those would obviously be honored. The students would have those same accommodations taking the NWE assessments as well. And all of the NWE assessments are untimed, and it really depends, as I said, the average amount of time for a K-2 student is about thirty minutes, and the average amount of time for a 3-5 is about fifty minutes, but they're untimed. The students will take the assessment based on his or her own needs. So just as an overview, the data that we'll receive is very accurate, reliable, and it's valid student data, and it's based on over forty years of research. The RIT scale is a very stable scale, and it will measure growth over a school year as well as over multiple years of data. It's more efficient, because it is that computer adaptive assessment, and it will obviously meet a variety of our different needs as we're using this assessment. And it also will give us, it will give us a robust reporting system, and we can use that for a variety of different indicators and give us that long-term success. So with that, what questions can I answer?
Well, I know we have a bundle, so please bear with us. I'll open it up, questions. Mrs. Mills?
Thank you. I know we've adopted a new reading series this year. Are there any tests that go along with that series? And is that going to be part of what's being purged, or is that something that is going to be in the mix?
Good question. Yes, there are a lot of assessments that go along with the REACH reading materials. However, as we looked at the different assessments, because they have unit assessments, the REACH program also has very short assessments, they have benchmark assessments. And when we first adopted it, before we knew for sure we were going to use NWEA, we said not to use the benchmark assessments, but to use the unit assessments. And then, once we made the decision for sure that we were using NWEA, what we did was we looked at those unit assessments, we laid out that instructional calendar for those unit assessments of where they would fall. And on top of that, then we laid our assessment windows for NWEA, as well as our I-Step assessment windows, to determine are there any that we need to drop off? And what we determined, especially in this first year of implementation, is to suspend any expectation that teachers would use the end-of-unit assessments in the REACH as well, because those can be given online or paper pencil. So there's not an expectation that all teachers will need to do that. Teachers can still opt to do that if they would like. But we feel like as we've dug into NWEA more, the types of data that we would receive in those assessments will be very similar to the NWEA, and so we can use our NWEA assessment in lieu of that information. And so that will give us more time to really dig into not only the REACH for reading, but also into our NWEA implementation.
Okay, does the REACH for reading, does that include Lexile ranges? Because I know this has Lexile ranges in it.
Yes, no, REACH for reading does not give you a Lexile range in their assessment.
So what do they give you?
It's a variety of, they'll have, they have skills assessments, they have, they're more content-specific in their unit assessments, and so that will give you more information. So there may be some teachers that opt to use that assessment as they're looking at grading their students, and they, there are options that they can use, but it's not an expectation that all teachers would need to use that at the end of each unit.
Okay. You said you're doing a fall-to-fall comparison. How are you going to do that when you're only giving the three-to-five test in the fall and in the winter and not in the spring? And the I-Step is the spring test. So how is the NWEA comparison going to work for, in that scenario?
And so what we'll do is we'll give it this fall, starting September twenty-second, and then we'll give it in the winter, starting January twenty-sixth, and then we'll give it again next fall. And so then we'll have a whole year's worth of data, but rather than having spring to spring, we would have fall, this fall, and then next fall, two thousand and fourteen, and then two thousand and fifteen fall. So we would have a whole year of data. And also, as NWEA looks at their data over the years, their data, they're, actually, they recommend a fall-to-fall comparison, because their data is actually more reliable and accurate looking at that. And one of the reasons is because many of the states have implemented spring testing. When you lay, and we saw this with some of our own students, as we looked at, you know, they would take I-Step and then they'd turn right around and they'd take Reed's assessment, they'd take everyday math assessment, and we would see testing fatigue, where the students were like, hey, I gave it my all and I'm done now. And we also have a very short year where we end on May twenty-seventh, or May twenty-sixth next year. And so we have a really short turnaround where the students would be engaged in that assessment. And so as we looked also at our, you know, NWEA, and they, you know, their recommendation is the fall-to-fall is a more reliable measure as well.
Okay, so you're just doing the fall NWEAs compared to the next fall?
Correct, yes.
Not, not throughout the year? I mean, not, you're not using the testing?
Well, we'll have growth from fall to winter.
Right.
And then we'll have, then we'll have growth from winter to the next fall.
Correct. Okay. Have you considered using NWEA in any of the other grades for students who are entering late in the school year? Are you going to use them? You said you were going to use them for kindergarten students who might be enrolling in order to find out where they are. I know it's very helpful for a teacher to know where a student enters a classroom. So are you going to be giving? So, are you going to be giving that as an assessment when they enter, or?
Possibly. We have our assessment windows, which are three weeks, and then, NWEA has much larger assessment windows. So, if the student enters within the NWEA fall assessment window, then yes, a student, let's say, you know, we've completed our testing October 10th, and a student enters the next week, October 16th or so, that would still be within the NWEA window, and so, we could have that student take the assessment so we could get that data, and it wouldn't be normed on our own norms because they didn't take it within our three-week window, but it would, we could look at it based on the national norms.
Okay.
And it's still, as you said, it would be very good information. However, if the student comes and it's in between one of the larger windows, they'll have to wait until the next assessment period. But if the student is a K-through-second grade student, we could look at some of those checklist assessments.
So, the checklists are not available for 3-5?
No. Currently, they are not. They are looking at developing a progress monitoring for all of their assessments, so K through 12, but that will not be available for another 12 to 18 months.
Okay. So, that's a possibility once that's, that's developed?
Correct.
And put into place?
Yes.
You could use the checklist?
Yes.
Okay. This may sound, this is a silly question, but is the, when you, when you talked about it being in English, being read to them, is it understandable? Because I know sometimes when you listen to computers, it's hard to understand what they say and how they translate computer language into, so.
Yes. And no, not a silly question at all, because in the earlier adaptations, even when we had the test read on I-Step or I-Read, it was in that very computer tone.
Right.
But no, the technology is, when the students practice that, they can hear it, the parents will be able to hear that, we can put it on a widget, so parents can see exactly what the assessment types of questions. And yes, it is, it's very advanced, but it sounds like Suri talking to them.
Okay.
It's understandable, yes.
And I'll ask one more question, is that okay? Then, the goals that are being suggested for the students to work on, are those stated as a standard in Indiana? A standard might be stated. Are those based on the new Indiana standards when they have specific goals to achieve? So, that's, so everything's interrelated? It's not just a goal?
Yes. Yes. The MAP assessment is based on the new Indiana standards, and they just, actually, they are just putting them, finishing them up this week, and I did, we were able to see all of the draft pieces, the assessments that they had, and they do align. We did our own alignment to make sure that they do match, and they're not just saying, yes, they're based on that. So, we do, yes, they will be based on that. And then, when the students set the goal, they would be setting a goal to achieve a higher RIT, but it would be specific in those skills and those standards based on the Indiana standards of what are those things that they need to work on.
They need to work on.
Yes.
Okay. And when you're creating Indiana, Carmel Clay norms, how many, how many schools in Indiana are using, currently using NWEA?
That'd be, I couldn't give you a number now, but I certainly can find out. We have several schools, several of our neighboring districts have used it for years, Westfield, Washington.
Westfield, I know.
Pike has used it for years, Washington Township, Hamilton Southeastern just started the last couple of years using NWEA. So, as you think about just the surrounding schools, several of our neighbors have, but I can get a number on how many total in Indiana. I don't have a.
Well, I was just thinking, because you wanted to compare them to like school districts. So, I'm trying to, I wanted to see how many districts that might be like Carmel Clay are in the state of Indiana, you know, using it.
Right. Well, and one of the benefits too is we can, we can look at schools in Indiana, but we also can look at schools across the country.
Right.
That have similar demographics.
Right.
And then, also across the world that has similar demographics. So, it really expands our opportunity to compare.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, one last question. Is any part of this, or any, yeah, going to be used in the teacher evaluation system? Because I know that I-Step is to be used for the teacher evaluations. Is the growth, when you, when you have your charts and you look at your school district and you look at your comparisons of school, of grade levels across the district, will a teacher's norms be compared to other teachers in the school?
No, not like they do the growth model with the I-Step. However, it could be used in the class learning objective or the targeted learning objective. Teachers could choose to use NWE assessments as one of the measures.
Okay.
But not in the comparison that I think I understand what you're asking.
Right. I'm not.
Not looking at their growth over.
My class growth as compared to Leila's class growth?
No.
I wouldn't want, you know, I would.
But it could look at individual students where the teacher may write a goal on, all of my students will grow at least, you know, 10 RIT score points or.
Okay. So, if they write a specific goal for that, then, okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mrs. Menenberg. Dr. Dudley, my compliments for your getting through 68 slides and somewhat less than even part of an hour. That's remarkable. This sounds like very exciting stuff, getting rid of a number of tests, having one test instead, that will free up a lot of instructional time. That sounds like a very positive step. I'd like you to talk just a bit about the process that we went through as a district to decide on this. Who in particular was involved? And, you know, just to kind of take us from, how did we get started? And who was involved? And how did we get to where we are today?
Great. Great. Good question. Last year, as you know, this was one of the district's goals, to explore student growth model data or systems out there. So, Dr. Wallen, Dr. Wallen, myself started with, we met with several different companies, and we brought also our curriculum instruction and assessment team in, where we met with College Board. We also met with ACT Aspire, and we met with NWEA. And we looked at all of the different systems that they had to offer, and how did that compare to looking at that growth model? As we determined, you know, which one best met our needs, then, we took that out to a variety of different stakeholders. We talked to administrators in the district, we talked to a variety of teachers in the district. We have a variety of administrators and teachers in our district that have some experience with NWEA. They may have experience from a previous district where they worked in that previous district. Also, they may have experience where their student, their own child, actually attends one of our surrounding neighboring schools, and so, they brought their feedback as well. And so, we moved through that, that process, then, we formally took it and looked at, with all of our administrators, looked at how would this help meet our needs? And then, we also took it to district discussion to determine, you know, how this is meeting our needs, to have that discussion there, and then, made the decision that NWEA was the one that best fit our needs to give us that data that we need.
Thank you. A follow-on question. This sort of thing, you know, probably is going to depend upon having the rank-and-file teachers to accept and to get behind this, like almost anything else that happens in a school. So, I guess my question would be, what kinds of things are, can we think about doing or that you thought about doing to help our teachers to embrace this change in testing?
Yeah, absolutely. We want to make sure that as we implement this, we make sure that all of our stakeholders, all of our users of this assessment data have a very deep understanding of that. We just started, actually, the last couple of weeks. We, all of our buildings have a very similar overview. They have very specific notes that they may not do it in, you know, 20 minutes or less, but they first have just an introduction of it. And then, as we're starting to build that capacity, as I said, this week, we're starting, we started today with our principals and our assistant principals to build capacity in developing trainers, so that not only can we implement it starting this year, but we can continuous that, continually implement that throughout the years as we have new staff members come on board. So, we can support that implementation in a very explicit, intentional way. So, today, we started with our principals and assistant principals, and then, over the next two days, we are bringing in 140 teachers across the district at all of our schools. As I said, we have seven teachers per school, not 140, only 35 per session. So, yeah, that's, we have seven per school, so we have 70, not 140, 77 teachers that we're bringing across. And so, they're in a variety of grade levels, so kindergarten through fifth grade, as well as special education teachers, Title I teachers, making sure that we are building that capacity so that when our principals and assistant principals take this back, this training back, then, they have the support also with our teachers building that capacity. We'll continue that in our next round of training with our coach, where we'll, now we'll have the assessment data, and so, we will be looking very explicitly at the reports and using those reports that we receive. And we'll do a similar model where we bring in our administrators, our trainers, we train our trainers, and then, we build capacity and bring in our teachers as well so they can help support that, and so that all of our users can get that very intentional professional development based on their role in using MAP. And we'll continue this with, we'll be working, partnering with our NWEA, with our coach, having our coach come in over, as we need him, to come in and help support this throughout this year and then, the next two years as well, so that we have that, that very intentional professional development. NWEA also has, on the other side, the technical side of it, we have what's called an implementation specialist. So, we've been working very closely with our technology team as we've been doing the behind-the-scenes pieces to get this up and running and get all of our students rostered and entered into the system, getting all of our teachers, all of our administrators, their roles and permissions in the system as well, and making sure we have all of that ready to go. Also, making sure our techno, tech coordinators and our technicians at all of the schools have an understanding and can problem solve as, you know, things come up, so that we have all of the different roles and responsibilities, and we have training at a variety of different levels to make sure that people understand. And then, as we, you know, our end-users really will be our students and our parents as well, and we want to make sure that our students have that ownership in that data as well, and really know where it is they're at and where they need to go.
Very good. I have just one last question. We certainly, I think justifiably, have high hopes for how well this new toolset can help our kids and help our teachers to help our kids. But I think there's nothing in public education which is sacred and safe from evaluation at some point. So, I guess my question is, what would be our plan for evaluating this tool? At what point in time would it be appropriate for us to take a step back and to ask questions about, you know, is this really what we'd hoped it would be?
Sure. Good question. And one of the pieces is we want, we would want to look at evaluation all along the way. So, first of all, gathering data on our initial use of this. You know, what are the pieces that we need to shore up to determine where do we need to go next? But then, ultimately, after we have several years of data and we look at that growth data over time, are we seeing our students not only achieving based on their RIT scores over time? Are we seeing, you know, typical growth? Are we seeing really great gains in growth? Are we seeing lower gains in growth? Why, why not? And then, also, are we seeing growth in I-Step? Because one of the pieces that this will do, because it is aligned with the Indiana standards, it will show, first of all, projecting that proficiency, and then, are we ultimately seeing our students growing in that area? So, we're not just relying on the NWEA data, but when then, we're comparing that to other data that we have. Are we seeing students grow over time, you know, as we look at SAT scores, ACT scores? Are we seeing, you know, are they truly ready to take those types of assessments? And what does that look like? So, we can use a variety of evaluation data over years, once we get several years of our student growth data as well.
Thank you. And just one parting thought, if you and Dr. Wall feel it would be appropriate to supplement all of that evaluation with perhaps soliciting some feedback from stakeholders as to their perceptions of how well this thing's working.
Sure. And that would be part of the evaluation.
Thank you again.
Mrs. Freed.
My turn. Okay. So, I have some follow-up questions, and I have a couple of questions on my own. But you said that the process I'm choosing, it started with the group here at ESC looking at all the possibilities, and then, it rolled out to the administrators, and then, the teachers. How many teachers were involved in that initial looking at it and thinking if this is something we wanted to look at further?
Well, the stakeholders that we looked at, their feedback on that, it was a variety of teachers in very informal ways. The formal process was when we took it to discussion, so the number of teachers at discussion.
So, prior to discussion, the teachers really had not been involved in the selection?
It's been, it was more informal.
More informal. And the other thing is, and follow-up on Greg's, is that how much is this going to cost?
It's, the cost is $12.50 per student. No, for the year, for the whole year.
For the whole year?
Mm-hmm.
And as you, we're gonna, we know we're going to, we have a plan for implementation. We know how we're gonna, some of the data we're gonna look at to see if it's actually doing what we do, and just like Mr. Phillips here, I would actually, I mean, how long do we stick with it? And where do we get the feedback from the people that are implementing it to see if it really is doing what we want? Do we give it three years? Do we give it three months? But I mean, obviously, we have to give it some time. You're not going to know anything after one year.
Right.
But how, at each year, are we going to reevaluate, get a group together to talk about how that year went?
Well, I think we would want to gather that data all along the way. However, I don't, we don't want to just implement it this year and say, oh, forget this.
Yeah.
Because as you looked at, you know, as I shared the implementation plan, it's a really, it's a three-year implementation plan, and it's, you know, important as we look at the data this year, understand how to use it, understand what those reports are telling us, but really, where the rubber meets the road is in year two in that implementation, where we look at the, what is that growth data telling us? And then, how are we lining that up with our curriculum and looking at our specific goals in our curriculum? And there's a whole process that we will go through where we, we're almost unwrapping that, the curriculum pieces and lining that up to what the data is telling us, because if we just, you know, get weighed and we continue to weigh the pig, he's not going to grow unless we do something about it. And so, unless, you know, unless we do something about that and change that instruction and really differentiate it based on the needs, that's when you're going to see the growth. And as the NWEA research shows, it's the students that make the most growth and the school districts that make the most growth is when they get it down to that end-user, when they get it down to the students really owning the data and setting those goals and understanding this is what they're working towards, and that's when they see the highest gains in growth for all of their students. And so, I think along the way, to go back to your question, I think is we're going to need to at least look at this over at least a three-year period of time before, to, before we do a formal evaluation. But that's not to say that we won't continue to collect that feedback along the way and problem solve, very similar to what we're doing with our REACH implementation. This is a growing year, a problem-solving year, and we're continuing to look at the feedback from teachers, from administrators to determine, okay, what are the things that we need to do next to support this?
Okay. And will this eventually be implemented at the middle school level?
That's something that I think we would need to continue to look at and see, what are the possibilities out there as we think about a 6 through 12 growth model data? And what are the areas of, will that, would that be something that would supplement that instruction? So, we'll need to look at those different areas, and that's something as we continue on this year to look at.
And this is just something that popped in my mind when I was looking at the sample questions and stuff. I know it's going to align with the Indiana standards and our things, but when they take the course in the fall, does it just ask questions till they don't know anymore to place them? Or like, I mean, how are we going to know that there won't be a question on something they've never seen before yet?
And there.
That's in order?
There very much would be, there very much could be a question that they've not had instruction on, but the way that the test works is it, it starts at that grade level, but then, it calibrates up or down based on how the students are answering it. And so, it's not specific.
It's magic.
It's, but it's, but it's not specific, where you could have a second grader that has a RIT score the same as a fifth grader, based on where that student, the student is, because even though they're taking the primary MAP, it will continue to calibrate up until they get that, they're looking for the zone of proximal development. So, they calibrate it until the student is answering either 50% of the questions correct or conversely, 50% of the questions incorrectly, because then, that's where the. correct or conversely, 50% of the questions incorrectly, because then that's where the instructional level is for that student. That student has enough background knowledge to be prepared for those skills and standards. However, and so they're right there on that cusp, and that's what it calibrates till it gets to that point.
Well, I think it's exciting. It sounds like an excellent program. I'm kind of anxious to see how it all works because to me, that would be wonderful. I wish I had it at Butler.
Tricia.
Next. I started to go later because some of my questions are checked off, but then, like Kathy said, then there's follow-up and it's like, okay. So I'll try to work through here. Obviously, with the NWEA, it greatly improves, or seemingly, from the one-page document that shows what our testing is compared to what you said two or three before. So it seems like it greatly improves the time we'll be spending on assessment and instruction. Without getting into nitty-gritty, what kind of improvement, can you give me a general synopsis of time? Days or hours or whatever that we spent on assessment in last year and going forward here that we see?
Yes, I could give you examples. I don't have it all added up in my head, but let me just give you some examples. For example, last year, we started our assessment where we did benchmark assessment for all of our students kindergarten through fifth grade using DIBELS-Next assessment. Those assessments are all given individually, and they, they were, they were shorter assessments. They took about five minutes per student, but having all the students go through the different assessments, so it might have been to have all of the assessments, it may have taken about 15 minutes per student, but they were all individually administered. So when you think about that, that's lots of people, lots of resources giving those assessments. And we did that three times per year. In addition to that, then our students in the fall and then also in the spring, and if teachers chose in the winter, our students would take the READS assessment. And that took about 15 minutes per assessment. However, in the spring, if we wanted to get a good measure of where the student is when the READS, it would only calibrate, it was a two-year ban. So students would, many of our students would max out, and so they might get a six-plus. And if you really wanted to see where their reading level was, you needed to give them the next grade level assessment. So then that would be another 15 minutes that that student might have to take that assessment as well, that online assessment. The same thing with the everyday math, that we would give that in the fall, and then we would also give that in the spring. But to truly get, for our students in the advanced math, so if they score very, if they, they scored a certain score like an 85% to 90% on their end of the year, we would give them the next year's assessment to see if they would qualify for the advanced math. But that would be then another 15 minutes of those assessments. So you can see, because it didn't, none of our assessments calibrated, many of our students were taking assessments twice, not just once, but sometimes twice in that time period. And in the spring, that was after they already took I-Step. Then they would, they'd go in and the, you know, the time on all of these assessments were online assessments, with the exception of DIBELS, that was not online, that was paper pencil given individually. But, so then looking at scheduling the computer lab times or the computers. And so the, eventually, what was happening is in the month of May, computers were used solely for the purpose of assessments.
So basically, you're saying we're not really comparing apples to apples, but obviously, our, our teachers and our students will be spending less time on assessment, and then that less time will actually give us more solid information?
Correct.
Wonderful.
And more time on instruction.
Yes, which is the key. And instruction that is pinpointed, is more focused.
Yes.
Leila had emailed a question like this, so this might be kind of along the lines. And you've hit on some of the communication systems we'll use to help staff understand how to use this information, how to use reports and things like that. But could you talk a little bit more on communicating with parents what their students' results are and communicating with the students? Like you said, the buy-in to learning is often key to that progress. And if you could also hit a little bit on, being a former special education teacher, we've had some, had some experience with RIT testing. And one of the pluses is you can focus in on where their level is at. But one of the minuses is unless you let the student know that there will be some frustration level, because you have to test until there's 50% failure, and the parent too, so they don't write in and say, oh, my gosh, my kid was so frustrated. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Right. And that's all part of, first of all, starting the assessments and, first of all, helping the students understand it and the parents understand exactly what you're talking about. It's not going to be that they take this assessment, and this is actually for many of our high-achieving students. I think this is going to be more of a problem, though they'll need to understand this because they're used to taking those assessments and they know they aced them and by golly, everything's great. This is going to frustrate them because it will continue to calibrate up until they don't know what they're doing. So helping the students understand. NWEA has a variety of different tools that we use with our students, and we also can share with our parents in the way of, some of them are very appropriate. One of them is, you know, it's a, it's actually, I almost thought Mrs. Frizzle was going to jump out, because the student actually, it's animated, and the student jumps into the computer, and I thought, oh, where's Mrs. Frizzle? Magic school bus, if the rest of you don't know.
Got it.
So, and they really understand the inner workings of that to help the students understand that their, you know, their job is to do their very best and to try their best. And they're, they will get questions that they won't know the answer to, and that's okay, and helping them to understand that. Also, another piece that we can use with both our students and our parents to understand what that assessment will look like is to, just similar to what we've done in the past with Experian's I-Step, we can put these links in my CCS so the students can practice them. You know, they'll, they'll have opportunities to practice them very formally at school, but they can practice them as much as they want at home. The parents also can see exactly what they're practicing and the types of questions, making sure, you know, the students understand what they're looking at, what they're practicing. And so that can be another way that we can communicate. As we go through these training this next two days, we're formalizing very specific plans on how we do communicate. You know, what is the student needs to know? How do you do that? What are those tools? What is it the parents need to know? What are those tools to be able to communicate that? But bottom line is, we want to make sure, though, that all of our stakeholders and starting with our teachers and our administrators fully understand this so that when they're having those conversations, you know, it's going to be the teacher talking individually with the students, but then also individually with parents, that they understand this inside and out so they can communicate this. So we'll do a variety of whole group, where, you know, with parents, we, they send letters home, information when they get their first report. Very explicit information will go alongside of it so they can understand what that says. But then also, when they, you know, our parents have questions about that, we can share that. Another piece is sharing this during PTO meetings, you know, having information nights when we have a PTO meeting with our parents and helping them to better understand that in a larger group. So there's going to be a variety of ways that we can share this with all of our stakeholders to make sure that they're understanding the data as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. And really, I think you've answered everything except for, I just, I just really want to thank you and anyone else who's been involved in this process, you know, throughout the district and beyond really, in that, oh, my gosh, it opens up the possibilities of really focusing in on instruction, teachers feeling more confident than when they're evaluated. They can see specifically, was my instruction effective, you know, where it was, where I need to work, you know, just get really in specifics. I just want to thank anyone involved looking forward like this. And then ask, I guess, at the school board governance level, what can we do to support this process?
Anyway, it's definitely been a team effort with a variety of people involved in this, and we're just on the starting edge of this piece. And so I think, just, I mean, I'm just very thankful that you guys have such great questions and are very interested in this piece, because as we, as we look at this, making sure that this system is something, we have to have at all levels, all of our stakeholders truly understanding this so we can continue with questions as we get reports back. We, you know, we may be able to come back at another workshop meeting and share what those reports look at a more, you know, district-level piece to kind of help you understand better what that looks like at your level as well.
And if we could continue to have the support as we go, continuing the goal work that we're doing, the goals that we adopted, look at six-12 this year. And can NWEA articulate K-8 or even beyond? Or do we have to look at a six-12 growth piece that interfaces with NWEA? That's the work we're going to be doing this year.
Okay.
So we'll be bringing back reports on that because we still have work to do. The challenge with that, as I said when I presented the goals, is that we're still waiting on the state to determine what they may or may not do. And our charge is not to add anything before we purge. But six, we did, I think, very commendable job with K-5.
Yeah.
You know, significant amount of streamlining and purging, or as Amy said, weed the garden, so that we can get more defined articulated real-time information on student assessment. So look for us this year for more reports on six-12.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I apologize for prolonging the meeting, but I too have a few questions. The first one, the student goal-setting worksheet seems to list standards or objectives for students to learn when it breaks down the RIT score. Does this align with our Indiana standards? Or what does this, because I'm so used to looking at an I-Step where it breaks down each and every, you know, there's three questions that address comprehension and what have you, and how successful the students were. Is this a very similar type of worksheet?
Yes. The goal-setting, the example that you're looking at does, probably does not align to Indiana standards, because that was an example, yeah, a specific one for the Common Core. But the goals that our students will be looking at, the goals worksheet that our students will have the specific Indiana.
Okay.
Standards, yes.
Am I to understand you correctly that this will replace the honors testing for K through five as well as transitioning to the middle school?
This will replace the achievement measure that we use. In the past, we used the Gates-McGuiney reading assessment, and we also used our everyday math and our end-of-course assessments. This will replace the achievement measure. This will not replace the ability measure.
Okay.
We also use the COGAP as our ability measure, and we will still continue with that measure, but this will replace the achievement measure.
Okay, thank you. You'd mentioned the $12.50 per student per year, but we're purging so many other tests. Is this then more expensive or does it pay for itself? Or how does this compare to what we have paid in the past?
Well, in the, it's actually, we're using our CPF technology funds because this is a technology-enhanced assessment. In the most recent past with our DIBELS-Next, our everyday math, and our Rigby Reeds, those assessments actually came along with the adoption. And so Rigby Reeds was no longer available because we no longer adopted it, but there was not an extra charge that came with the adoption. The everyday math assessments came with the adoption, there was not an extra charge. And DIBELS-Next is out, that anybody can use that free of charge. So there was not an extra. However, you may recall, and Pam, I'm sure you recall, when we used to use AIMS Web assessments and we used their management system, and that was, this, this cost, that was like five years ago that we used that. And that cost was a little bit less, but over five years, you think about inflation, this cost is similar to that cost as well.
Okay. That one, and that one, and that one. Do we know, is the state looking at NWEAs a potential growth model or?
It's our understanding that they, when they did the RFQ, this was one of the many growth models they looked at, but as we all have seen, they're, well, though there were some decisions made prior to that, so. But this was on the list during the RFQ. We'll see how that plays out as far as when they made the decision to stick with what they were doing.
Okay. And?
Time will tell.
Will these reports then be available electronically for parents to review and then be someplace that we can review year-to-year our child's progress? Or how are we going to have this?
For the parents electronically, possibly, that could be down the road as we think about, because as one of our other goals is to look at our whole website platform and then also to look at our student management system. So that could possibly be down the road. Currently, no. The, electronically, they would not be available to the parents to review. However, when the parents get the report, there's a report that they can get that can, that shows them the year-over-year information. So it shows them all of their scores from, if they started taking it in kindergarten all the way through, and so they can see every year and all of their scores over time. And so that would be in that, that paper form.
And my last question, it doesn't necessarily, well, my question basically is, how are we measuring the soft skills, our 21st century skills, and the growth our students have with those? They're critical and, you know, creative thinking, collaboration, communication. It doesn't necessarily look as though these questions can show growth in those soft skill areas. What are we doing with that?
Right. And you're absolutely right. They, these, this type of assessments would not do more of those soft skills. However, as we look at, you know, this is, this is one type of assessment to help inform our instruction, but this is not all of the assessments. We have a whole measure of formative assessments that we use that really look more at those soft skills. One of the focuses that we've had the past several years is on that collaboration. That's, that's where you would call a soft skill, where students at all different levels learn to collaborate and to continue that learning. And so how do we measure that collaboration? So it's not just in the structure of, it's a very positive structure for instruction as the students are collaborating, but then also looking at, you know, where students are rating themselves, students are rating the rest of their team on that. Their teacher may do some where they call them, check clipboard cruising, where they're collecting that formative assessment in the classroom, looking at some of those soft skills pieces. But there's a variety of those formative assessment pieces that we look at.
We're also looking at part of our SEL piece, find out if there is that tool out there. I know IU was engaged in the High School Survey Student Engagement, Kathy, you might remember that. We were, we experienced that in my previous district, I know we did here too, that kind of faded. IU is once again trying to determine a model that measures those skills as it relates to SEL and soft skills, like you said, Leila. They haven't come up with that. I've discussed that with them, they're working on that. The Search Institute of Minnesota's been doing one for many, many years to measure developmental assets of youth. So I look to give you progress on that as it relates to that goal. But that's an important aspect of our wellbeing piece of our students. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of measures out there for that, but that's something to keep looking for.
Thank you very much. I think I've concluded my questions. Board, do we have any additional questions or comments?
Thank you so very much for indulging us.
You're welcome.
Dr. Dudley, that was very comprehensive, and we are all very excited to see this move forward as well. I'm sure you are, just as, yes.
Dr. Wall, do you have anything else you'd like to share with us this evening?
No. Amy, thank you for a thorough explanation and, and your patience, very good. And Board, thank you for your thoughtful questions. I think it's a very exciting opportunity for us to take student growth from a discussion to actually pragmatically and practically. And, and discussions that we've had with teachers, that I've had personally with teachers about this through all 15 buildings, very interested in this kind of model that, that really is streamlined and user-friendly for the teacher, for the student, for the parents. So it's an exciting opportunity right now.
It is exciting, yeah. Board? The only thing I'd like to share is that next week is the Fall ISBA Conference that many of our board members are going to be attending, as well as Dr. Wall. We hope to bring back some very fruitful information to share with the district. And with that, thank you for joining us this evening. Meeting adjourned.